Derek. Is Derek on yet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi Derek. Okay.
Don, Don.
Just a second, I'm trying to make sure I'm on the right page.
There's eight in it, let's see, seven, eight, something like that. Starts on seven.
Yep, thanks too. See, any others, we got Joe and Don. We don't necessarily have to have a quorum, but.
Yeah, Joe and Don are the only two council persons.
Okay, well.
So far.
Look, Sandra, we don't have to have a quorum for a workshop, do we?
We don't, no.
I didn't think so.
I'm just trying to.
Yeah.
A little bit more time. We'll go ahead and start, I'm just, I'm also looking at some other. Alrighty. I'm sorry, everybody, I'm just not very organized. Now. Okay, well, I'll go ahead and get us kicked off and hopefully people will join this. So, um. This is a, this is Mayor Kevin Smith, and this is a city council budget workshop. We under COVID, for those who are watching, we're not having regularly, or we're not having in-person meetings until we have to take legal action. And but we we have until the end of the month to approve a budget for fiscal year 22. And so we use these workshops to go over the budget, ask questions, and so forth. I want to welcome any media that's here, I think maybe KJIW, maybe the all of us, tell my daddy world, anybody else that I might have missed, any guests we have. I want to start off by saying that I know that we all send our condolences and our sympathies out to our colleague Christopher Franklin over the tragic and unexpected loss of his wife Kia. Sandy was kind enough to point out earlier that tomorrow the wake for Kia Franklin is going to be held from four to seven. I'm sorry, Sandy Kingston Church, what was it, Kingston?
Kingdom Believers.
Kingdom Believers, I'm sorry, couldn't read my writing there. Kingdom Believers Church. Four to seven tomorrow is the wake and at noon o'clock, at nine o'clock, at nine on Saturday is is the funeral for Kia at PLM and D Center at Helena Crossing, twelve o'clock noon. So again, we want to, I know we all share in in our sympathies to Chris and his family. Okay, we'll get started and Mr. Turner, I'm going to go ahead and recognize you, I believe tonight, we're going to go over the fire department budget and possibly one or two other things.
Okay, there's not much in the in the budget that you submitted on December first. It's just a really pretty much standard operating budget for the fire department. I did make a mistake in in the fire department on page seven. In the overtime amount, I have twenty-five thousand and thirty dollars. It should be more than that, what I did was that that amount reflects the scheduled overtime, like we've discussed before, the overtime that comes naturally with working twenty-four hour shifts. And so that's the overtime that they normally get just from their normal one on, two off, twenty-four hour day shifts. So they need a somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-four thousand dollars in additional overtime. Through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, they had ninety-five thousand and three hundred dollars in overtime. And that's great compared to how it used to be, in this, they got under a hundred thousand dollars. So considering that it's only twenty five thousand in the budget right now, like I said, that was a mistake, I brought in the wrong number, I should have added, well, I brought in the right number, but I should have added in about seventy-four more thousand dollars for callouts, you know, when they have a fire, you know, the volunteers come in and some of the other firemen that aren't on duty, they show up as well. So that overtime amount isn't included in here, so we need to add about seventy-four thousand. If that's what they want, if that's what the council wants to do, last year was about sixty thousand total. But and I suggested that it be around a hundred thousand and they came in under, slightly under a hundred thousand. So I feel pretty good about putting about a hundred thousand dollars in for the fire department. And they came in under a hundred thousand this year, I'm pretty sure they'll come in under a hundred thousand. Again, next year. Other than that, I spoke with Assistant Chief Bohr today, after the mayor submitted his budget, they decided that they wanted to add air packs to the budget, the air packs would be approximately thirty-five thousand dollars, that's what we paid earlier this year for a set of air packs that we got earlier. And they want to buy five sets of turnout gear for the fireman. And that, those five sets will cost approximately ten thousand dollars. They have thirty firemen, but Chief Brown wants to start purchasing them in increments, instead of trying to get thirty at a time. He wants to start rolling them out periodically. And so they decided that they wanted to add about ten thousand dollars in expenditures for turnout gear for the fireman. In addition to that, they also wanted to discuss some adjustments to base pay. What happened last year when we had the minimum wage adjustment, you had a lot of people, the fireman and the fireman first class, pretty much make the same amount. So they want a little separation between the fireman, entry level fireman and the fireman first class. And also, they want to increase the other ranks pay as well by five thousand dollars in the base pay. They still would be separated by two thousand dollars, but they want to give them an increase in base pay of five thousand dollars. And they were also seeking merit increases for the administrative captain, the assistant chief and the fire chief. Chief, Assistant Chief Bohr was going to get in, give you a little bit more information, I see he's not on yet. So that's where we sit with that. They, he wanted to increase the captains, the base pay for the captains thirty-five thousand, he wanted to go from thirty-five to forty. Lieutenants, base pay is thirty-three thousand, they want to go from thirty-three to thirty-eight. Engineers, the drivers, base pay is thirty-one thousand, and they want to go to thirty-six thousand. And fireman first class and entry level both earn thirty thousand, three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars right now. He wants to leave that the same for the entry level and wants to bump up the first, the fireman first class thirty-three thousand. So I discussed with the assistant chief, I told him that you know, to me that we can't take any official action tonight, it's for information purposes only. It may take some working to get that into the budget. And so I kind of suggested that he just discuss it with the city council. And maybe at some point after, they work on adjusting the base pay. But we may be, we may have time to do it before February first, if that's what the council so chooses. So but that's where we sit right now with the fire department. If you have any questions, and like I said, the the air packs are needed for the, well, I didn't say, but I should have mentioned that the air packs are needed for the ladder truck, that's what they want air packs for. And it also helps with ISO rating, to have those air packs on the truck, that's something that we need, but they should be on there, but that'll, that will help with the ISO ratings. And start purchasing turnouts periodically.
And let me add, and then we'll no, I was just gonna say, I'm glad you brought the ISO writing up, because the ISO rating, and yeah, I say a lot of things that are just, y'all already know, but just for the benefit of anybody watching on Zoom. The ISO rating is our fire rating, our fire class code. It's set by external entity and it's based on the ten. The lower you are, the better you are, which means your fire protection is better, and that is reflected in your insurance rates for property insurance, your fire insurance for any property. And we are currently at a three, the ladder truck, having a place on Cherry Street to put the ladder truck, if you remember doing that. Having, going back to having Fern Hill opened and available, having thirty certified firemen. The other things that you mentioned all go in, well, a big, a big thing that we've talked about recently, the fire plugs themselves, even though those are actually, a lot of people don't realize this, but that's actually a function of the water department. But of course, the fire department depends on them, and that goes into the ISO, so we had to do the state inspection, official inspections of of those, and we we've completed ninety-nine percent, they missed some, they're going to come back to get. And then they've identified the ones that need to be repaired, and that was paid for out of CUREZ Act, I mean, out of rescue act money. You know, we need to talk about those repairs, but Chief Brown has already applied for the ISO rating to go lower, probably never go lower than two. If one is usually reserved for large urban areas, over fifty thousand people. If we ever get over fifty thousand people, that'd be a nice problem to have, but two thousand to go. And Chief Brown assures me, feels confident that we're going to get that. Now that we've done the fire plugs was the last big thing, but the air packs, all the other things that you're talking about here all go into that, they come and do actual inspections. And we anticipate that coming up in the next few months, and we'll get the official recognition of a lower ISO rating, so what does that mean? It means that everybody that pays property insurance in the city limits of Helena, West Helena, or serviced by the Helena, West Helena Fire Department, which I think goes up to at least five miles outside of the city limits, and maybe further than that in some cases. We'll see their insurance rates decline. All other things being equal, of course, if they have claims or other things. But the base rate for their insurance rates will go down, and it's not often that we could tell our citizens that we get to lower something, but but that's, that's what this is, so it's really an investment. And of course, it's better fire protection, it makes us all safer as well, so I just wanted to take the opportunity for that little advertisement for the ISO rating. The air packs are important. I'd also agree with Mr. Turner that they have done a very good job of keeping overtime down compared to the previous years. One of the sort of bargains we made, I guess, overtime was used as a replacement for increased salary. And it's sort of one of the bargains we made with with our employees is if we raise their salaries on the front end, would they, would we be able to reduce overtime on the back end? And of course, that's kind of a chicken and egg thing, you have just a little bit of leap of faith in the beginning. And and I want to say it's thanks to Chief Brown and Assistant Chief Bohr that they have been very successful at keeping it under control. And so I feel strongly about doing our part, which is to to make sure they have adequate salaries and return. So that's all I was going to say. Mr. Turner, I can take any questions you have or discuss.
I have a question, two or three. First of all, what is the the final, after, what is the fire department's total of budget, the proposed budget? What's the total amount? I've got down here two million, eight thousand, two forty-nine. What should that be? You said you had made some mistakes and corrected them and.
Well, I hadn't corrected the mistakes, but it looks like the budget for the fire department is one million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand and seventy-eight dollars.
One million.
The bottom of page eight.
Bottom of page eight, well, I'm looking, oh, mine says two million, eight, two, two million, eight thousand.
On page eight? Oh, I saw one million, I saw one point nine million, one million, nine hundred fifty-five thousand.
Mine is the same, it's two million, eight, eight thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars, sixty-three cents.
Oh, so I may have the wrong, let me.
That's what mine shows.
Let me look and see.
The budget I got shows two million, eight thousand, two hundred forty-nine, Don's got the same thing.
Yeah, I may have the wrong one, let me try to.
Now, you got the wrong one, or we got the wrong one?
Well, mine agrees with yours, mine agrees with yours, Derek, just so you know.
Okay.
Now, you also have Act eight eleven, no.
Act eight thirty-three, but.
Eight thirty-three funds, so I don't know if that's what we're looking at there.
You guys show, this shows. It says January twenty-two through December twenty-twenty-two.
Are you asking me a question?
Yes.
What is, what's the question?
Yours shows January twenty twenty-two through December twenty-twenty-two at the top of the page. Let me go look at the one that we sent on December first, let me, let me double check. Yeah, okay, that's the one that the mayor sent out, I sent you the wrong one, mayor, the one we did, the one we submitted did, does show two million, eight thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars.
Okay, now my question, my question is, I mean, that number stood out high. My question is, how did this number, this figure look compared to last year's figure? I don't have last year's budget total, what you do. In comparison, is this up or down, or how far up or how far down? How does this stand? How much?
I have to do a calculation for you, because you know, we, you know, we had a a four percent increase in salaries. That's probably pretty much the difference, but let me, let me look at last year's budget and I can let you know.
Joe, there's, there's actual end of the year budget.
The what?
The years, there's, you know, there's actual, there's budgeted and there's actual, by some time, that were made throughout the year, but we didn't.
I'm going to give him the numbers that they adopted, the adopted budget. The adopted budget was one million, nine hundred seventy thousand, three hundred seven dollars and fifty cents. That was last year's adopted budget.
Last year.
Yeah.
All right, we got, let me ask you something else, now we got thirty active firemen, is that correct, thirty?
Yes.
How many volunteer firemen do we have?
I'm not exactly sure, they've been a lot of ten, and I think they have ten.
What, what?
They, they are a lot of ten, and I think they have, I think they have ten, but I'm not sure, I wish the assistant chief or the fire chief was on. I think the assistant chief told me he was trying to get on, he was waiting, waiting to be let in. But I think they have ten volunteer firemen.
And you say ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay, ten. All right. And I was looking at the gas and oil in the budget, is it, how does that compare with last year's gas and oil?
Okay.
It shows eighteen thousand, two hundred sixty-five on my budget, how much was the gas and oil last year, actual, what was actual, or do you have that?
Actual. The actual amount? Hold on a second.
You know, it's going to be higher this year.
The actual amount was fifteen thousand. They don't, you know, they don't patrol, you know, so they're not doing patrols or anything like that, they go to a fire, they come back.
While we're talking about that, I've had a lot of people ask me about why they see our fire trucks, you know, in so many places in town. Why can't they use cars or something to go to Walmart or go somewhere?
I mean, if they have a fire, they don't want to, if they have a fire, they don't want to drive back to the fire station. You know, they want to be able to go straight to the fire.
That question always comes up, I'm always, and I tell them, but they, in case there's a fire and they're there, they just leave, go right onto the fire.
And a lot of times, they have, they have utility vehicles that they use to drive to go get lunch and things like that.
Okay. Okay, well, you answered my questions that I have right now.
Well, I'm trying to figure out what the difference between what I have and what you guys have, but yeah, I see the budget that you're talking about, the the two million dollar one.
Yeah.
Joe, that, that is a question I get also.
Yeah.
And I could tell you, and you could tell them this, that it's they do a very good job now compared to at least when I came in of watching that closely. And I mean, I think there's always room for improvement. One of the things that I'm asking to watch is the birthday party thing. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing, and we want to be engaged with our community as much as we can be. But at the same time, you know, and they, you know, they, they're on call, so I mean, they'll leave one of those things and have done that, have had to leave before, if they get a call, middle, something like that.
Oh, yeah, I understand that.
But we wanted, we want to do that, somebody turns a hundred years old or something, I mean, that's a big deal. But we have to also be careful, because the next thing you know, everybody's going to want to do that. And that's not what we're in the business to do, and we don't have that kind of money, so, but they've done a good job, I want to say, it's a lot better than it once was.
Well, I compliment them on the job they do, they do, they do a fantastic job, they really do. Well managed, well managed department. That's all the questions I have.
Mayor, did you want to discuss about the, discuss the, there's Chief Bohr.
Well, we can, we can, we can go ahead and do that. The fire marshal is not part of the fire department budget. But of course, it would be part of the city budget, and it's something we've discussed, and we've discussed often on quite a few times. To the short version is, we have a lot of arson. We have a lot of vacant houses that are, that are catch fire, some of them might be, some of them might not be arson, but the bottom line is the state arson, people don't come in unless there's a death. Since I've been mayor, I can only think of one case, although it could be mistaken. But the vitality and the person was already dead, they weren't killed by the fire, the fire was set to, to destroy the evidence. And what, I've been educated myself on this, but you have to have somebody that's both capable of forensic fire investigations from a law enforcement point of view, as well as from a fire department point of view, so they actually are sort of cross trained and licensed in both. And they have a very particular set of skills that that you have to be licensed and trained to do. And you don't have to drive around much to know that that we could use that in our cities, so. Anyway. That's all I'm going to say, you want to present the rest, Derek?
I think Chief Bohr may want to discuss something, and well, one thing I'd like to just make a quick, I think what happened was that I made some salary adjustments. And so I'm looking at the difference between the budget that I have and the budget that the city council has, the one that you submitted on December first, the budget that I have was the one before I made some salary adjustments, so I made some salary adjustments to the fire department, and then I submitted it to you and the city council, so that's, that's, so that's why mine is different than theirs. Anything else, probably should be discussed, Assistant Chief Bohr, he can kind of go through his ideas behind the increases in base pay that we have talked about earlier, we had already talked about the air packs and the turnouts, chief, but if there's anything else you'd like to add.
As it relates to the base pay increases, this is a number that we just came up with. We've been trying to, you know, work on it and and get it towards somewhat competitive with with departments of equal size. And it's a lot of factors that play along into it outside of just that as well. One of the things is, for right now, one third of our department is only one third of the department has been here five or more years, two thirds of our department hasn't been here five years, two thirds. Now, and this with, working with a turnover rate at sixty-two percent. And the same one third, this, this, this mostly, with all our officers, our lieutenants, our captains, our chief, assistant. And the same one-third, there's, there's, there's mostly, with all our officers, our lieutenants, our captains, our chief, assistant chief, admin captain, our higher ranking guys, our experienced guys, you know, are up for retirement in the next year. So in next year and a half, we could possibly lose all of them if they decided to go, and hopefully that's not the case. So retention has always been an issue with us, and we're trying to do something about it. And I think the, the last moves that we made in the last few years, of course, with the, uh, with the, um, with the three percent increases and, and, uh, when the minimum wage went up, they helped a lot. They really did. They helped a lot. And, um, and I, I've done some numbers and I noticed that we only lost one firefighter that made the officer's rank to non-retirement. So usually when they make officer, they kind of stick it out and retire. And now our guys are in position to where they can retire, retire a little early, and we don't want that to happen. We really don't, because you gotta understand, these guys have been here fifteen, twenty years, and they're only gonna get replaced by guys that's been here four and five years. You know, we don't want to put our city in that type of situation to where our high experienced guys have only been working for four and five years. Now, granted, our guys have a lot of experience because we are one of the busiest departments in the state of Arkansas as it relates to structured firefighting and a lot of other things, but at the same time, it's still, you don't want to put those guys in those type of positions right now. So we need to try to keep our officers here as long as possible. You know, until we can get these guys trained up, and I think with the raising of the base pay, uh, attract uh, uh, younger firefighters in, and keep them. Right now, uh, the, the way the salaries are set up, they're really just backed on each other. There's no separation, there's no gap, there's no incentive to want to move forward and further education because the pay, uh, stays the same. And, um, by making these slight increases, you know, it, it, it puts in a gap. So everyone's not making the same amount of money. It gives incentive to continue to further their education and, um, and, and, and move forward in, in, in the Fire Department. And, uh, and it also puts us in a position to where it, 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 it's smart for the guys to stay here. You know, we, we just lost another firefighter to another department. Matter of fact, he left and became a chief at another department. You know, and it just goes to show you with the amount of experience you gain from working here, you can go off and, and do great things. And we had, um, chiefs from Little Rock trying to recruit our guys, in a sense. You know, and, and a lot of other departments too, because of the experience they get from Hell on West Side, and our guys are very well-trained, they have tons of experience. And we need to keep that here. You know, it's a large investment that goes into these guys with, with, with the training we put them through and different things that we do on a day-to-day basis. A lot of other departments feel like they can profit from it, and we don't want that to happen because we spent a lot of money and getting these guys, getting these guys ready and putting them in a position to where they can help better serve our, uh, citizens and our community, and we don't want them to leave. So, um, with these increases that we're asking for, it creates a gap to where they're not making the same amount of money, and it also puts them in a position to where it's competitive wages. Um, we're just looking at a few, uh, Camden, Arkansas, they start their guys out at thirty-four thousand, and in the first year, they wind up jumping up to forty-one thousand. Clarksville, Mississippi, start their guys out at thirty-four thousand, and they wind up ju- jumping up to thirty-nine thousand, right at forty. And then Ford City start their guys out at thirty-three thousand, and within the first year, they jump up to thirty-five thousand. And, and we're not trying to make as much as other people, you know, we just trying to get close. You know, we trying to, trying to increase it a little bit to where our guys, you know, can have some competitive, uh, wages. Now, granted, I will say this, and there's no disrespect to no other department, but I'm just speaking for the Hell on West Side Fire Department. Our guys work very hard, tirelessly. I'm telling you, they put in tons and tons and tons of work on and off duty. Uh, guys constantly going to class, getting trained and certified in different areas to help better serve our community, man, and, and they do a lot of community service and, and, uh, public relations is just great. If you had to leave it to a vote for the community, and I'm pretty sure they'll back one hundred percent with the work that they get from these guys. And, uh, I understand it's a lot that we always want to do for everybody in every department, but I'm kind of selfish when I say this. Our guys stand out there on the island on their own with, with, with the services that, that they give. I'm, I'm pretty sure that everybody in this community feel comfortable when they call our department. They know things are gonna get done in, in a professional manner and, uh, and a timely manner as well. Um, I, I didn't pull out the numbers for how many lives and all that we've been able to save, and all the reports that we've, uh, gotten from the people in the community and, and all the praises and all that, but, uh, I do want to speak out for my guys and say that they, they really do deserve this. They deserve a chance to make some competitive wages and, um, and give them an opportunity to stay here and still be able to take care of their families. And, uh, and what we're asking for is, it is not ridiculous. I hope we can afford it. I talked to, uh, Mr. Turner and, uh, and, and, and it sounds like there's something that, that's, that's doable, you know? Uh, another number, y'all gotta excuse me, I'm a little under the weather. Uh, our overtime rates, uh, from two thousand eighteen, we spent two hundred and, uh, six thousand dollars in overtime. Two thousand and nineteen, we spent two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in overtime. Twenty twenty, we spent a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in overtime. And in twenty twenty-one, we spent only ninety-four thousand dollars in overtime. And this is in the midst of a pandemic, while all the other cities overtime rates are going through the roof. So we was able to do this, you know, with less personnel most of the time. A lot of people sick, I'm sick with COVID now, you know, and we have a few other people out with COVID. And, and trying to, trying to deal with this in the midst of all this, but we can't run from it. You know, we're one of those problems, we can't, we can't hide behind this. We, we, we can't, we can't work from home. There's a lot of stuff we can't do. We have to continue to, to give our services to the people in this community, and I really think we're holding positions like this and being able to work in, in, in the magnitude that our guys have done for years, I think is more than deserving. But I'm hoping there is, 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 uh, financially doable. Uh, and, um, from speaking, like I said, speaking for Derek Turner, seeing like we, we should be able to do it, and we're saving money all over the place. Uh, there was, there was, uh, uh, on average, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars saved in just overtime alone. And, uh, we use other funds too to help pay for things that's, that's not burdened by the city anymore. We use other funds to help pay for our fuel costs. So this saves the city. I think we did save five thousand dollars this year, and it could be more next year depending on how we budget it along with, uh, some other things. Um, so, excuse me, y'all. So, uh, we were working, you know, to continue to find ways to save money, and we're working on things to generate revenue as well too for his, uh, charging for burn bands and different things like that. We're gonna add later on down the line, once we earn out some wrinkles and and get, and get some more numbers and stuff for you. But, uh, right now with the salaries that we're looking at, Derek, did you show them the numbers? Mr. Turner, can you hear me? I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Yeah, uh, yeah, I was waiting on you to kind of explain it to him.
Okay, okay. Well, right now, as we sit, excuse me. All right, our, uh, entry level guys are making, um, eleven dollars an hour, which comes out to be uh, thirty thousand three sixteen. I'm sorry, I haven't talked to this much, uh, since, since.
I went through those, uh, uh, Chief. Yeah, I went through the difference between the base pay and what you were trying to get to.
Okay, 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 that's great. Well, you know, and you, you explained the differences in the pay as well, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
But you could, I mean, if you want to, if you want to explain more, that's, you, you.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna try and simplify it, basically.
Yeah, I want you to keel over.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to give you a chance to get some water there. See if you're worrying me. Um, but, and thanks for coming on, even, even with what you're dealing with. But, um, basically, when, when, with minimum wage and uh, other raises that we did last year structurally, the bottom and the top are, are not equitable as a reflection of uh, years served and experience and all the rest of that, because we haven't really adjusted our salaries in a way that would, um, make sense in that regard. It just kind of happened instead of, instead of us sort of methodically, uh, doing it with that in mind, and so it's just sort of evolved that way. And, and I think what Chief Boer and, and, uh, what we're trying to say is, is we want to rectify that structural inconsistency or inequity between the positions and their experience levels and so forth.
Yes, sir.
Did I say that correctly?
You got close enough to it. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. See, the thing about it, you are, uh, we want to create that gap in ranks. So our guys continue to work and, 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 and increase their education so they can take on the next huge responsibilities with, with that comes with the next rank, but we want it, like I say, to be equitable so those guys can see a difference in pay, you know, give them some incentive to move on. See, with all the experience that they get from here at these lower levels, they take that information, and then they just run to another department, come in the door, get promoted to the next position. You know, we've seen it time and time again. I was recruited to come to another department, you know, and, uh, and, and we want to kind of stop that, you know, and, and if you compare our cost of living to, uh, other cities, I think with, 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 with some of the base pay increases we're asking for, it makes it competitive when you do the difference, because the amount of money you spend living here, making this amount of money is almost equal to you going to another department in another city, spending more in your, in the cost of living. So so that's giving us a fighting change, you know, it, it's gonna be a few thousand dollars off, but, you know, we build up, uh, you know, that we build chemistry with our guys here, and it's more than just firefighting, more than just de-jog. Chief Brown, starting with Chief Wilson, and Chief Brown is trinkle on down, and of course, with me, because I've been here since I was a kid. You know, and, and, and the family atmosphere that we build, the camaraderie that we have, and the relationship that we have with our community. You know, on and off duties and holding other positions in the, in the community. We have guys, the working department is Deacons. Uh, we got guys, the working department that own their own restaurants, do other jobs, work in, in, in other places, and, and they, uh, communicate with the, with the citizens of our community very well. And, and it may not sound like much, but that's a lot. You know, it means a lot to the guys to want to stay here. We just gotta give them some incentives to stay here. And I think in raising the, the, the base pay would help us out a lot. And the reason why it's a big gap at the top versus the bottom is because we're piggybacking off each other so much right now until we have to start from the top and work our way backwards so we can create those gaps. You know, we want to be able to get the, the young guys in and keep them here, because our older guys, we can't afford to lose them either. So they get a little taste to say, hey, you've been here for X amount of years, we need to keep you here for a little longer. So, uh, and I think this is gonna help out tremendously, you know, versus losing somebody in one and a half years to five years is a huge difference for the gases just now starting in order for them to gain some experience. You know, it's gonna help them out a lot. And, uh, let, let me see if I got some more numbers. I got all type of numbers, y'all. I'm sorry, this, all I've been doing is taking uh, notes and, um, doing analytics on this stuff. Uh, a lot of other departments can start off, you know, the, a difference is, is in a holiday pay and different things like that, the, the time off and different things like that as well, and, and I think with, with, with the, uh, benefits that they get from working here, especially with the health insurance makes a huge difference too. You know, that kind of helps us along, you know, and get us closer to competitive with, uh, with other departments as well. So being able to get their base pay up is, is, is one of the biggest changes, and I'm almost willing to bet my hat on it that if we do increase the, uh, the base pay, uh, it's, it's gonna change their turnover rate from sixty-two percent real quick. You know.
Hey, Demarcus, let, let's, uh, I feel like we need, we need to allow more, you need to take a break and get some water, and we need to make sure we leave enough time for discussion and, and, uh, questions, so.
Yes, please.
Once you get, but, uh, uh, I will just brag on you a minute, and you can see what a, a great job uh, Assistant Chief Boer is, does in, in, in analyzing our department and our needs and paying attention to his, his men as, as well as Chief Brown. Are there questions or or comments of, uh, Chief Boer or Derek or me or anybody?
I'm sorry, I gotta put this head back on my head, Cole.
Uh, Mayor, I did forward you the correct budget. Everybody else has the correct budget except you and I, so I got the right one, and I sent you the copy of the script. That's the only difference was the Fire Department. I must have made some changes in their, uh, salaries and wages.
Well, and, and we, I don't know how well a job we do this, but we need to continually remind our, our existing employees, including our firemen. Um, and when we, you know, that they, that they get free health insurance for the low duck. And, and that is a big, big thing these days, and very rare. Um, and it's very rarely mentioned when we talk about salaries. We're looking at salaries. We're not looking at your actual take-home. Plus, we're, we've baked into the numbers of four percent cost of living increased this year, and we did a three percent last year, as we've talked about already. Um, but the structural, uh, inequity between the positions when it comes to experience and so forth lends, um, as Demarcus pointed out, um, to a tendency of, of people who, who will leave or get easily recruited or stolen from us, and we don't want that, because it's way more expensive to have to read, to have to train people buy uniforms and, and not to mention the time and energy, uh, only to see them go somewhere else. I do think it's a wise move to try and, um, correct that structural inequity in the salaries. Other questions or comments? Though that, or, and we did briefly go over the, uh, we did briefly go over the, uh, Fire Marshal position, Demarcus, even though it's not strictly speaking part of the Fire Department budget.
Okay.
This was probably the most, this and the Fire, and the Police Department, I mean, between those two, or somewhere in between would be the most adequate, uh, time to talk about it.
Okay, if y'all have any questions, feel free. Now, I'm willing to answer anything you have for.
Well, I guess that's a good sign.
I hope so. I hope so.
And, and I'm sorry. Mark, someone tell you something from, uh, being a salesman for a long time. You stop when it's good. So you know, you don't keep, you don't keep, you don't keep talking.
Okay. And I had a packet made out.
And you don't need to anyway, because, because you're, uh, because you're, you're, you're sick and exhausted, and I want you back and healthy, so. Um, but you've done a great job.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Everybody agrees with that. So anyway, Demarcus, why don't you, I mean, unless anybody wants you to stick around, why don't you take care of yourself, get healthy, get back soon. We need you. And, uh,
Appreciate it.
And everybody else, uh, if you, I mean, he's available by email, text, cell phone, uh, even, even while he's home, so if you think of something later, or the rest of us for that matter, you know, let us know. You got anything else you want to? You got any, any, any final things you want to say, but, I mean, I think we're about there.
Yeah, well, I, I, I will close with saying this, uh, you can call me. I, I would love it if you did, if you have any questions, and I want to make everyone a packet to take with them, so everything that I was going over, you'll be able to see it for yourself, so you can kind of see where I was getting this information from and, um, and see what it is that we're dealing with. So I'm willing to answer any questions that you might have. I'm actually looking forward to it. And, uh, I would like to also add to it that with the move. And uh, I would like also add to it that with the moves that we're making thus far is making a huge, huge difference. In our department, and and I'm just hoping we can continue to move forward. Because uh, we have a lot of, a lot of guys who's up for retirement that I really don't want to leave. We can't afford to leave, you know, we don't wanna have our least experienced guys making these life-changing decisions. On these scenes in the next few years, we wanna be able to retain our seasoned guys as well. You know, and increasing their pay, we'll do that, you know, so you got guys that's been here twenty years making the decisions. This is pretty much what everybody would want versus somebody that's been here three or four years, making life-changing decisions. Cuz there's something we do on a daily, it seems like, and um, hopefully we can uh, work something out and do it in the best interest. Uh, uh, of the man. So uh, let me know what you come up with, what what it is I can do to help move forward or. If I need to add some, take away some, whatever it is you need from me, please let me know, and I'll go from there.
Thank you, Demarcus, and thanks again for all the work you did in your presentation and and usual methodical. May the diligence work and with your and your passion for the fire department.
I really appreciate it. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Turner.
Hey, uh, Mr. Turner, one really quick thing, Act Thirty-three money is in the budget, just wanna point that out. You wanna say anything about?
Act Eight Thirty-three is a fire department equipment fund, and basically what we do. Is use that money for equipment we use for turnout to uh, we use for. Uh, I think we use it for air packs. We use it to help pay for their uh, fire trucks. And so it really uh, helps supplement their uh, the 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 general fund. And supplying equipment for the fire department. Uh, I'm projecting about a hundred and five thousand dollars for uh, Act Eight Thirty-three. For twenty twenty-two, Act Thirty Thirty-three can be found on page. Um, twenty-two. And page twenty-three, and if you go through it, you'll just see it's basically just equipment, uh, firefighting gear. Then you can also pay for things like office supplies. And uh, the thing we get some of their computer software support, they have a fire report software. And so the software support, we pay for that out of out of Act Act Eight Thirty-three as well. And so uh, I have projected about a hundred and five thousand dollars in revenue and uh, revenues from Act Eight Thirty-three. Uh, state fund, uh, that'll help them pay for some equipment and other things. And so that that hundred and five thousand dollars will help to supplement some of the fire department expenses.
Any any questions about the Act Eight Thirty-three money or budget? Any other questions period on tonight's uh, presentations, basically, before we before we wrap up? Or anything else, Mr. Turner, you wanna add or anything?
No. But uh, uh, other than, like I said, the Act Eight Thirty-three, and also other than equipment, it it helps pay for maintenance on the equipment. Uh, we have maintenance on the automobiles, there are utility vehicles. Uh, and so, like I said, it helps supplement the fire department, but other than that, there there's nothing. Um, it's not enough to help pay for the air packs and the um. And the uh, turnouts, so unless I made some adjustments. So I probably could appropriate the third, the air packs in there, but I would rather try to find some way in the general fund to uh, appropriate the air packs. But I I'll be looking into the budget, do some, try to do some adjustments over the next few days.
You know, we lost um. Travis Wallace in the police department, but we can't forget the three guys that we lost several years ago in the fire department. And the the it is, these are life decisions, like um, saving decisions that we make here, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say one thing before we finish here tonight. I think our fire department is probably one of the best-run departments that we've got. They uh, really do a fantastic job, and they have a good image in the community. They really do a good job, and I commend them for that. I saw that fire the other day. I was in the area down there. They were right on top of it, and they did a fantastic job.
Yes, they did.
They've had enough of the work they do, but I've got some questions uh, about the police, and we'll get to that later on.
Well, actually, that that's a great segue, uh, Miss San Columbia too. Um, I don't have it in front of me. Our net, or will our next meeting be this coming Tuesday, I guess? Anybody? Our next budget workshop?
Yes, next Tuesday.
And we we will have a presentation, but what else? Is are we gonna cover anything else at night?
No.
Just that, okay. All right, um, it it there's no, again, this is not a a officially called uh, council meeting. This is a budget workshop. Uh, with COVID, we're trying to uh, do this via Zoom. If we take any illegal actions, we'd have to, at least for in our council right now, we'd have to do uh, do it differently. But um, we wanna thank again the media that showed up, our guests, anybody tuned in. And anybody that participated, and again, our sympathies go out to our colleague, Chris Franklin, and the uh. What he's he's dealing with this week, as well as the uh, activities, or the uh, events that are coming up tomorrow. Which I'll say one more time, there's a wake from four to seven. Uh, I'm gonna mess this up again, Kingdom.
Kingdom Believers.
Kingdom Believers Church, four to seven tomorrow, wake, and then PLMD Center will be the funeral at Nana on Sunday. And again, our sympathies go out to them and. Did I say Saturday? I meant Saturday. I'm sorry, PLMD Saturday on Saturday. Uh, thanks for, thanks for correcting me. I didn't catch him that uh, Saturday at noon. Uh, we'll make the funeral. Any other comments or or anything else before we call it? Not, thank y'all very much, and we'll see y'all Tuesday.